I have the coordinator call the roll.
Mr. Dixon?
Present.
Mr. Rollins?
Here.
Mr. Scovano?
Here.
Mr. McCulloch? Mr. Segal?
Here.
Mr. Connor?
Here.
With five present, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Before we go any further, I'd like to thank Rod and Connor in the back who are working behind the scenes to produce our broadcast on Channel 20 for the hundreds, Mr. Connor, the hundreds of people that watch our board meetings on TV.
Fifteen.
So, thank you guys for always doing a great job. We are having some technical difficulties with the speakers out there, but we should be able to hear okay. So, if you don't hear us, let us know, we'll speak louder. We will now move on to the petitions and communications portions of our meeting when we invite the public to make comments. The First Amendment of the United States Constitution guarantees the rights of citizens to petition their government as well as provides for freedom of speech. Also, the Illinois School Code requires that there be time at regular and special meetings for public comment. Thus, we are following those mandates during these petitions and communications portion of our agenda. According to our board policy, the public comments portion of meetings is limited to a total of 30 minutes. Board will not respond to comments at this time. If it is appropriate, you'll be contacted in a timely manner by staff in response to your questions. We have a clock on the wall to help with your two-minute time, and we only have one speaker tonight, so I won't go through the rest of that, but just ask that we follow our guidelines and we thank you for your interest and cooperation. So, we do have one speaker, Nancy Godowski. Yeah, there, yeah, right, okay. No, okay. Okay. If you'll hit the microphone button there, Nancy, thank you.
Okay, I wanted to talk about cell phones tonight. It was a big buzz of conversation last week.
Okay.
And, think about it, the kids are on the bus, they have their cell phones. They're in the hallways when they get off the bus, cell phones, cafeteria cell phones, classroom cell phones. And, when I go into sub, they've got their earbuds in, so they don't hear me calling their name, so I mark them absent, and then they get all upset because I marked them absent. And then, they don't listen to the directions because they're all tied into their cell phones. Not every kid, but a lot, a big portion. It's getting worse. And if they're not doing that, for the first, I would say, 10 to 15 minutes of class, they're looking for an outlet to recharge their cell phones up for the rest of the day, or at least till the next class. The cell phones have become the students' happy place. I mean, you should see them, they're just so happy when they're on their cell phones. And they text, which starts fights sometimes because this boyfriend's breaking up with that girlfriend. And then, they watch their movies, they play video games, and when they do their work, it does it for them. They don't have to look up anything, they just punch the question in, punch the word in, and it does it all for them. And I found out this year, it was really amazing to me, when they're doing formulas for algebra problems, they take pictures of the problem, and then the cellphone does the formula for them. So, that's why the kids, when they used to take their ACTs, they're not allowed to bring their cell phones in. So, you could be an A student, go and take the ACTs, and you vomit because you don't have your cellphone with. So, what I'd like to say is, oh, and we had a recruiter come in for one of the military branches, and he asked them, after he gave his presentation, if they had any questions. Immediately, a girl went on her cellphone, and he said, "Why are you going on your cellphone?" She's, "Well, I have to ask Siri what question I should be asking you." So, these kids are losing their critical thinking skills. Not only can they not read by third grade completely, but they're losing their thinking skills. And I asked them if they had seen the movie Apollo 13, and most of them had. I said, "You know, if you were up in space, you'd still be lost in space because their equipment didn't work. They had to figure it out."
I'm going to ask you to wrap up just because of the time, okay? I'll give you another 30 seconds. How's that?
Okay, I appreciate that. So, I guess I'm concerned about which direction, and I think your board member, Mrs. McCulloch, I know I'm supposed to not say her name, but everybody knows who it was.
Okay.
Okay, she brought up a good thing about the pouches, and I was just talking with some people from other schools, and they were saying they're using the pouches, and they've been very, very successful because at least the students have the responsibility of keeping the cellphone with them. Because I'm going to tell you right now, I am not collecting cell phones because they'd sooner bite off my arm than let me take their cellphone. And so, the other thing I want to bring up is what's been happening with data on the news lately. Cell phones are crippling these kids, their brainwaves, and I think Mrs. McCulloch even brought that up. It's starting to show early signs of dementia for this group of kids coming up with complete electronics, and they're unhappy because it's always keeping their brain going. And I told them the one good thing about it, because I mentioned this to them, I said, "The one good thing about it is we can be in the old people's home together."
Okay.
So, they weren't really thrilled about that one, but...
Thank you, Nancy.
So, maybe that'll keep them away from their cell phones.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing that. Okay. We'll move on to board member comments. Mr. Dixon?
I just wanted to, we have, on this Sunday, we have Father's Day, so I want to say happy Father's Days to all the people that are the fathers, because by time, board times, I won't be able to say it, so say it now.
Thank you. Mr. Connor?
So, I know you wouldn't notice, but this is a flag tie.
Okay.
And so, I'm wearing it because of two things. One is, didn't get to thank all the veterans on Memorial Day for their service, so I want to do that now. And also, this Friday is June the 14th, and everybody knows that day is?
Flag.
Flag Day, thank you. So, thus the flag tie.
Okay.
And you can see the repeat, if you want to come on the meeting before July the 4th, and Veterans Day, and so forth, you'll see the flag. Otherwise, you won't see the tie.
Okay. Mr. Rollins?
I just wanted to comment, not last week, but the week before, we had high school graduations. And when I first got on the board eight years ago, I was actually a little bit shocked, the size of the graduating classes. We were graduating a little over 200 from each of the high schools, which, given the size of our high schools, I thought, you know, why are there... I went to a high school of 800, and we graduated 200 kids. So, I was really pleased, this past set of graduations, to see the number of kids that we were graduating. East alone graduated, I wish the press were here, east graduated 365 kids, and the other three high schools all graduated in the high 200s. So, I hope that's an indication that we're doing something right. I don't think the size of the high schools have really increased overall, and I hope those numbers show up in our graduation rate statistics with the state of Illinois, because that's something else that's a little bit of a mystery, how we can be graduating so many more kids, but it doesn't seem to be showing up in our graduation rate.
Yeah, I was going to add a comment about the graduations. I got to go to all, and many of the board members attended many of them, and, you know, they were... I want to thank Mr. Dotson and his team for coordinating all of the hard work that has to be done to pull that off, for the hundreds of family members that are there, and I think that it really went without a hitch. And so, that was really great. And then, it was last Friday, was the staff retirement dinner, last Friday? Yeah. So, congratulations to those that are retiring. It was my honor to thank them with Dr. Jarrett for their service to the district, and they're all smiles ear to ear because they're retiring. Mr. Segal?
Yeah, speaking of the graduations, I thought they were successful, not only for the numbers, but looking through the programs and seeing the recognition that so many of the students were able to receive for a lot of the accomplishments, both academic and extracurricular, was pretty spectacular. It's a real privilege as a board member to get to celebrate with these, with all these students. And actually, Mr. Dixon and I each had a special celebration as we were able to greet our own children as they walked across the stage and have a very special celebration. So, really grateful for the whole school system for affording us this opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now move on then to the consent portion of our agenda, including the following, the meeting minutes of May 28th, payroll, accounts payable, purchase orders for fiscal year 19, purchase orders fiscal year 20, contracts under $10,000, construction bid request log and travel, the bid recommendations for filter service, bread and buns for nutrition, drug testing and medical services, recurring contracts for Danielson Contract August 2019 Teacher Institute, the Forecast 5 Analytics Fiscal Year 2020 Renewal, the Rock Valley College Facility Rental, the other consent items, including property casualty and student accident program insurance, builder's risk insurance annual renewal, the acceptance of classroom tables, and the Freedom of Information Log. Is there a motion and a second to approve these consent items?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Segal. Are there any consent items that board members wish to have pulled for separate consideration? Mr. Rollins?
7B and 7C.
Okay. Mr. Connor?
8B and 9A.
Okay. I'll have the coordinator then call the roll on the approval of the consent items not pulled.
Mr. Dixon? Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scovano?
Yes.
Mr. Segal?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
The motion passes with five yeses and one absent.
Mr. Rollins, B and C together or separate? Okay, I'll take a motion then to approve item 7B, which is the bid recommendations for bread and buns for nutrition services?
So moved.
Mr. Connor moves?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Segal. Questions and discussion? Mr. Rollins?
So, I always ask the same question. So, we only got one bid on this, and, which I never like to see, so, and there's nothing in here about what our budget was before we got the bid in. Our budget is supposedly exactly what the bid came in at. So, do we have any explanation for, like, why there was only one bidder? There's really that little competition for bread and buns out there?
Locally, it appears so. We sent it to five local bakeries. Part of the issue is the large daily volume and the number of delivery stops for all of our schools. So, we did attempt to send it to several local bakeries along with the wider net we cast through DemandStar, and we did not receive responses from anyone else or any inquiries from anybody during the bid process.
How often do we bid this out?
I believe it's, if it's like the other USDA ones, it's one year with four one-year renewals, so up to every five years.
Do we have any idea if we had the same problem last time?
It didn't appear that anybody else bid last time either. I would assume for the same reasons, but I can look further into it.
Mrs. Holy has something she wants to add.
So, one of the issues, as Dane had indicated, Mr. Young had, Blood had indicated, is that there's a number of stops at each school, they have to deliver to each school, and so that's why it's not as desirable of a bid. When we were looking at consolidating some of the operations where we would have a centralized delivery location for certain products like this, when we go into the new Ops Center, which hopefully then that will help increase the desirability for this kind of contract.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions or comments? I'll have the coordinator then call, Mr. Dixon?
A simple question. Now, have we thought about breaking it up into smaller groups to make it more compatible? Would that still lower our price?
Potentially, but I think we're looking at it in a different way because it's really the deliveries potentially, yes.
Okay.
I'll have the coordinator then. Coordinator call the roll on the approval of item 7B for bread and buns for nutrition services.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scovano?
Yes.
Mr. Segal?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
The motion passes with five yeses and one absent.
Thank you. I'll now take a motion and a second to approve item 7C, which is the bid recommendations for drug testing and medical services?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Segal. Questions or discussion? Mr. Rollins?
So, this came in over our budget, and my question is, there's been some just very high-level generic discussions about potentially partnering with the city to use the city's health clinic to do this work. Has anybody ever followed up on that? I don't know if, I don't even know who's, this is.
Mr. Zetaker, I believe.
I do share some of this between us and transportation. There has been discussion in terms of the overall clinic partnership with the city, but we haven't engaged further in terms of any kind of logistics around that. I did speak with the head of HR for the city at that time, but there wasn't any discussion in terms of sharing this specific service as far as drug testing with physicians and media care.
I'm just going to suggest that, especially if these bids are coming in over our budget, that it's about time to have those discussions, and the city might not even be competitive, but let's just at least ask the question and see what it would cost.
Certainly. Any other comments or questions? Now, I'll have the coordinator call the roll on the approval of item 7C, Drug Testing and Medical Services.
Mr. Scovano?
Yes.
Mr. Segal?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
The motion passes with five yeses and one absent.
Thank you, and I'll take a motion for the approval of item 8B, which is the Forecast 5 Analytics for Fiscal Year 2020 Renewal.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Mr. Rollins, seconded by somebody. Mr. Dixon, okay, I thought it was you. Questions? Mr. Connor? Mr. Connor? Questions or comments?
The reason I pulled this one is simple. I told Mrs. Yar, in reading the PDSA, the one thing I'll point out, in the summary, it does say that this is for financial analysis, but what I pointed out is, this actually has a lot more capabilities. So, the one thing, as a reminder to the board, and I've said this before, Mrs. Yar and I have talked about it, as a general delivery for metrics, they have a good system, and it's one that I'm hoping that will roll out to all the board members so that we can use this on a regular basis. So, I pulled this because I think it's important that we know that we have a, what I think is a very straightforward tool to use, they have good visuals, and that one of the things that we might want to start talking about is how we could represent the metrics that we want, so.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Now, I'll have the coordinator then call, roll the roll on the approval of item 8B, Forecast 5 Analytics.
Mr. Segal?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scovano?
Yes.
The motion passes with five yeses and one absent.
Thank you. Next, I'll take a motion and a second for the approval of item 9A, which is the Property Casualty Student Accident Program Liability Insurance.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Segal. Questions or comments?
So, I pulled this one because this is a big-ticket item, and I think, one of the things, so being in the insurance industry, is all these categories are complex, and one of the comments that Gallagher makes in this, which is absolutely true, is that with, and most of you, if you watch the weather, realize that storms and hail damage and all the rest of that have all gone up. So, you all know about healthcare and the rest of that, but the property casualty side has gone up, and a lot of the thrust of the programs that are being done in this Clic program is to reduce our costs and to essentially bundle our coverages. And I know it's not terribly exciting, as all the commercials on television will tell you, but it's big money, and I appreciate that we're doing this in a very structured way. And again, this is complex, so any attempt at keeping our premiums down is appreciated.
Thank you. Any other comments? Thank you. I'll call, have the coordinator call the roll on the approval of 9A, the Property Casualty Student Accident Program Liability Insurance.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scovano?
Yes.
Mr. Segal?
Yes.
The motion passes with five yeses and one absent.
Thank you. We'll now move on to the closed session consent agenda items, including the following, the appointment of Lanatasha Bell as a 12-month Director of Recruitment Diversity and Diversity Recruitment, the appointment of Carrie Nordor Pagan as a 12-month Dean of Mathematics, the appointment of Patty Strel as the 11-month Elementary Principal at Bloom Elementary School, the appointment of Willie Boyd as a 10-month High School Assistant Principal at Guilford High School, the appointment of Ebony Wren as a 10-month Elementary Assistant Principal at Lewis Lemon Elementary School, the appointment of Sarah Craig as a 10-month Dean at Westview Elementary School, the settlement agreement and a release for AS, the HR organizational report and addendum, and the closed session consent items for student discipline, including, unless otherwise modified below, the board adopts and accepts the hearing officer's findings and recommendations in the following cases in which students expelled or suspended are prohibited from being on school grounds and school-sponsored activities without the prior written permission of the principal. Students 4284, 4285, 4289 are expelled through the end of the 1920 school year. Student 4287 is expelled through the 2021 school year. The student 4286 and 4288 will be given an EIA agreement through the end of the 1920 school year, and the suspensions for student 5012 and 5013 are upheld. The following students are receiving EIAs, student 1051, 1052, 1053, 1054, 1055, 1056, 1057, 1059, 1060, 1061, student 3913, 3915, 3920, 3921, 3923, 3924, 3925, 3926, 3929, 3930, 3931, and student 3933. Is there a motion and a second to approve the closed session consent items?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Segal. Are there any items that board members wish to have pulled for separate consideration? Seeing none, I'll have the coordinator then call the roll on the approval of the closed session items.
Mr. Dixon? Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scovano?
Yes.
Mr. Segal?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
The motion passes with four yeses and one abstain.
Thank you. Okay, we'll now move on to our next agenda item, which is the superintendent's report, Dr. Jarrett.
Yes, during the committee, the whole meeting, I offered and invited our two charter partners to have a few minutes during the superintendent's update, and we have representatives from both organizations here, so I would like to offer the opportunity first to Legacy, and then I will offer the opportunity to Galapagos as well. The timeframe for the superintendent's comments, I would talk about, let's shoot for about five minutes. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Legacy.
Good evening.
Welcome.
And thank you very much for another opportunity to speak to Legacy. What we wanted to bring to your attention is the accountability plan that we got for our last renewal. There were several goals addressed in that accountability plan, and what we wanted to do was point out our progress towards meeting those goals from the last accountability plan. Goal one was that Legacy would secure full authorization as an international baccalaureate middle-years program world school, and we did receive that authorization in November of 2015. Goal two was that Legacy students would achieve mastery in the core academic subjects based on the Common Core standards in the areas of English Language Arts, Math and Science. And we did show growth, and there was equity in that all of our subgroups showed growth, which resulted in our being designated as a commendable school by the Illinois State Board of Education. Goal three was that all students would demonstrate continuous progress in all subjects based on the Common Core State Standards and the International Baccalaureate Standards. Legacy Academy far exceeded the percent of projected growth in English Language Arts and Mathematics on the PARC assessment. Goal four was that all instructional staff members would be able to demonstrate comprehensive content knowledge and provide excellent instructional delivery, and we feel that that was, that goal was accomplished as well. I would like to, in the interim, bring your attention to the report that we received from the site visit that the district did for this renewal period, and you'll see that for item number one, it says, "Do classroom interactions and organization ensure a classroom climate conducive to learning?" We got a highly effective on that. For number five, "Does the school have a supportive learning environment that reflects high expectations?" We got an effective for that. Six, "Does the school design professional development and collaborative structures to sustain a focus on instructional improvement?" We got an effective on that. And seven, "Does the school's culture indicate high levels of collective responsibility, trust, and efficacy?" And we got an effective on that. And our point just being that we showed growth, and we're definitely on the right track with our students, and we did want to be able to at least, you know, acknowledge that. Now, we have a long way to go. Our next focus is, of course, going to be proficiency in increasing those numbers, but we do feel that we've put a lot of systems and structures in place that will lead to that. Thank you.
Now, I'd like to invite our partners from Galapagos, if they would like to share some comments with the board.
Hi, thank you. My name is Stacy Puckett. I'm the Dean of Instruction at the Lower Academy of Galapagos. I've been working there for the past eight years, for as an instructor and for as a Dean of Instruction or Dean of School Culture, and I just wanted to say thank you for the opportunity to talk tonight. Mr. Elaine unfortunately could not be here. He's here within spirit. I've talked to him multiple times today, and he's in Costa Rica with our scholars, who are, as we speak, night hiking. They've done, gave school supplies to schools in Costa Rica, and also been doing a lot of biology work in the rainforest. Within the last eight years that I've been employed at Galapagos, I've seen a lot of change from having, now we all have Common Core-aligned curriculum in all of our subjects, to our after-school programs we offer our scholars. I hope and wish that we can continue this and see where we can change and help give opportunities to the scholars of Rockford. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, all right, okay, great. We'll now then move on to our action items for tonight, and our first action item tonight is the renewal for Galapagos-Rockford Charter School. Dr. Wolf presented this at our last board meeting. Take a motion and a second to approve item 14A.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Segal. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, I'll have the coordinator call the roll on the approval of the renewal for Galapagos.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scovano?
Yes.
Ms. McCulloch?
Yes.
Mr. Segal?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
The motion passes with six yeses.
Thank you. Our next action item is the renewal for Legacy Academy Charter School. Is there a motion and a second to approve this item?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor? Seconded by Mr. Dixon. Any question or discussion? Seeing none, I'll have the coordinator call the roll on the approval of the renewal for Legacy Academy Charter School.
Mr. Scovano?
Yes.
Ms. McCulloch? Mr. Segal?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
The motion passes with six yeses.
Thank you. Our next action item is the Rockford System LLC Safeguard Donation. Is there a motion and a second to approve this item?
So moved. Second.
Moved by Mr. Connor, seconded by Mr. Dixon. Questions or discussion? Mr. Rollins?
So, when this first came up months ago, I asked the question whether, if we're concerned about the safety of the students at Guilford, whether we've also done an audit of the safety of the equipment in the other high schools, and the answer was no. And it got pulled, and when it was brought forward on first reading a few weeks ago at Committee of the Whole, I asked the same question, and the answer was no. And it's before us tonight, and so I'm going to ask the same question.
So, there are two types of audits that Rockford System performs. One is a life safety audit. That's sort of your need-to-have audit, and then there's a nice-to-have. So what are the upgrades that we could do to our equipment to make it state-of-the-art? What Guilford had done was both the need-to-have and the nice-to-have. What all of our schools have had done is the need-to-have. All of our equipment is safe for our students. We had one issue that has since been resolved and was resolved prior to the holidays, and the donation at hand is Rockford Systems' offer to upgrade the equipment at Guilford to make it state-of-the-art, to bring it to OSHA standards. And our equipment is safe for our students. However, OSHA-certified standards are not required for equipment that exists within public high school districts.
So, some of this is, I think, a mismatch between what I hear and what is in the executive summary, because in Section G, it says, "If we do not upgrade our equipment to meet industry standards, students are at the risk of injury." So if we don't accept this donation at Guilford, are the students at Guilford at a risk of injury?
No.
But that's what the executive summary says.
You're correct. So I think probably what happened was the summary was maybe copied and pasted over from prior to the life safety audit, and I apologize for that. But our equipment is absolutely safe for our students.
Any other questions or comments? You have the trick microphone, by the way, tonight.
So, do the other schools, is there a plan to get them nice-to-have? What, to the same level? I mean, we're looking for equity here.
Absolutely. So we have committed to working with Rockford System to have them perform the same audit that was done for Guilford at the other schools. It will cost about $7,000 to the district.
That's just for the audit, not for the equipment?
That is correct. That will, the audit will go through every piece of machinery in all of our schools and outline what needs to be done to bring it to state-of-the-art equipment.
Which, I'm so thrilled for the donation. I'm very appreciative, but you can understand the reservation for doing for one school and not the others. And I think that what I heard from Mr. Rollins previously is, we'd like everybody to have that same audit, know what's there, and identify how we're going to make everybody whole in that respect with state-of-the-art before we just target, or before we accept for one And we're not there, right?
Correct. Because Rockford Systems would really like us to accept this donation before they perform the audit on the other schools. However, because they've been asking us to accept this audit since last October, and they have a relationship with Guilford High School, it has, Guilford created this relationship within their own academy support teams and their own administration, and I think where the problem arose was miscommunication, probably at the central office, where we didn't necessarily communicate with each other about the implication to the other schools.
So, I get it, but I think I'm hearing that there's like, eight months have gone by, that you guys at $7,000 for each of the schools had, could have done the same and at least made an identification and a recommendation. I mean, it's not the board that has held back Rockford Systems. It's, you know, the administration, your office, whoever, and I understand that's a budget issue, the $7,000, but, you know, and I don't know if you're talking, is Roosevelt also part of that, right?
Yes, absolutely.
So you'll have, you have four more.
It's $7,000 for all four additional schools, not $7,000 each.
Oh, that's like even under 10. You'd even have to ask us.
So, the issue wasn't budgetary. The issue was that Rockford Systems, upon learning that this was being held up, they were very frustrated, to be honest, and it's taken a lot of finessing to bring them back to the table, to even get them to a point where we're here talking about this again today.
And one of the things I want to address that we're doing moving forward is, when a donation now comes forward, and we expect and hope that additional donations will come forward to all of our schools. For example, Roosevelt got a very substantial donation from the city to help pay for their plastic. There was a private donor, it was very substantial to improve one of their pathways. We have about 48 different pathways in our five high schools altogether right now, and all of those, we hope, will have very committed individual or, in some cases, groups of two to four partners. And what we hope will happen is they work with our students and really connect, is that we will see this happen more regularly. So the policy implication moving forward, from my perspective, is to make sure that anytime a donation comes forward, and to ensure that there are not long delays like this, which we acknowledge is our responsibility as the administrative team, that's going to go forward from the principal supervisor as well as to Mrs. French, so that we can make sure we are charting and keeping track from an equity perspective of what's coming forward, so that the board doesn't have to be the keeper of equity. But I will contend that all of our schools fortunately are receiving donations like this. It does not, at this point, appear to be disproportionate. I can just recently speak of very significant donations that have been made to Jefferson High School for their programming. East High School just received a very substantial donation through our work with CNC to fund an ambulance simulator. So the good news is, we're seeing this across the district. We want to make sure that as we bring donations forward in the future, that we're keeping a running total through Mrs. French, so that we're not seeing any differences or monitoring to make sure one particular pathway or one particular school is getting way ahead of the others. But I think we have, we are confident we can address those concerns moving forward. What is different from the first read to now is we made the commitment to the board that we are going to go forward with this $7,000 of analysis. It's in the college and career readiness budget, and so then we will use future budget cycles to address this issue from an equipment standpoint. So those are really the two big differences. One, we've looked at this from a policy standpoint in terms of, not policy, but administrative procedures. And on a secondary level, we wanted to also ensure that there was a record-keeping system to make sure that we were monitoring the equity of pathway donations, because we expect that frankly, as companies do work increasingly with our students, we are hopeful that these opportunities will regularly occur.
Mr. Rollins?
So what's the timeframe for doing the audit for the other schools?
They have a six to eight week turnaround time due to their current business workload. So, six to eight weeks is when it will be complete, scheduled and complete.
So, the difference for me is, and this is possibly just, and I've had this discussion before with the administration about how you write your executive summaries, we are on record now, multiple times, in talking about this as a safety issue, not as a donation issue, not as a money issue, but as a safety issue, and we are on record now, multiple times, of saying, "We're going to make Guilford safe, and we'll worry about the other high schools later." And I have talked about this before, and I don't like bringing it up, but it's a good night to bring it up, because there's nobody here. We have a history in this district.
There's a few people here.
And that history is that Guilford was treated differently, was treated better than the other high schools. People who went to high school in Rockford at the other high schools still talk about it. I've got a partner who's a graduate of East, too. Yes, once a graduate of East, always a graduate of East, who still complains about the resources that Guilford had that East didn't have. I really, I really wish the administration would learn to be more sensitive to this issue, and that's all I can say on this.
Mr. Dixon?
Tim summed up everything I was going to say. But my whole point is saying that we understand that we want high schools to cultivate companies and build relationships with them, but the problem is when it seems like one school is getting all the resources. And I echo the same thing, Mr. Rollins, Mrs. Jew, the same, is that we have to be sensitive to this, because we want the relationships to be built, because that's going to help our schools, but see the bigger picture, and the bigger picture is, if it looks unfair, we're going to have problems. And so I would like to have better tracking device, which I heard that you were going to do, but this is the first time I heard that. And so, prior to this, I think that would have been good to see, this is some of the donations that have been come through in the last five years from all of them, but as of right now, it doesn't look right.
Okay. Ms. McCulloch?
So, I too wish we had had the list. I think it would have helped us to understand, I mean, what was the East simulator, the ambulance simulator? What was the cost of that donation?
$30,000. It's not technically a donation. It's federal Perkins dollars that were used to purchase that. It's an investment, yeah.
The Roosevelt example was a more than $10,000 donation.
That's the plastics one? And then what did we get at Jefferson? You said something?
I would say it's fair to say Jefferson has by far the most up-to-date and expensive CNC operating equipment. If you visit their lab, it's the closest thing we probably have to state-of-the-art. Is that fair to say?
And that was donated, or we purchased that as well?
That was donated.
The notion that...
I struggle, because I hate, I don't, you know, I was hoping we could, you know, table this until we knew what everybody needed, and we saw a commitment by the district to take care of those, but I really didn't have a sense that there was the kind of donations we're seeing in other buildings, the whole picture, the differentiation of the verbiage in terms of safety and not safe versus safe and nice-to-have. The whole thing could have just, for my sake, been done better as a board member voting on this issue. But at the same time, I don't wish to, I wish to appreciate the generosity of what Rockford Systems is offering, and so it's a tough place to be. Thank you.
Any others?
I just want to be clear that I wouldn't have brought this forward if I thought there was any inequity being perpetuated, and in fact, I think, and we will be happy in the, not this week's update, but I think by the following week's update, would it be reasonable to think we could demonstrate that to the board?
Yeah, and largely the schools track the donations. The district office does not track individual school donations. I don't know the dollar threshold that a donation hits to where it comes to the board. I think...
Well, first of all, the donation did come here, I believe, for the Roosevelt. CNC is a...
Mrs. Holy says she can answer that, and then Mrs. Yar can.
So, under board policy, any gift that would have ancillary costs has to come to the board. So, in the event, like, equipment, the maintenance of that equipment, that's why this came to the board for approval and other gifts like that.
Like music instruments?
Yes, music instruments.
Mrs. Yar?
I just wanted to point out one thing that I've requested, is all these donations do come to me, so that way I can properly record them in the general ledger. So we do have a tracking outside of a spreadsheet. I'm not, I mean, spreadsheets are nice, but it really needs to go in the general ledger as well, so I've requested that information also come to me, so we can record.
Thank you. Mr. Connor?
Yeah, just one quick question on that, Ms. Yar. Would that go into the asset inventory, or is that a separate process?
Yes, it should be tagged if it's an inventoriable item. Yes.
Any others? Okay, then I'll have the coordinator call the roll on the approval of the Rockford System safeguard donation.
Ms. McCulloch?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scirvano?
Yes.
The motion passes with six yeses.
Thank you. Our next item is the Rockford Park District Facility Rental. Is there a motion and a second to approve this item?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Siegel. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, I'll have the coordinator call the roll on the Rockford Park District Facility Rental.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scirvano?
Yes.
Ms. McCulloch?
Yes. Good luck to the kids.
The motion passes with six yeses.
Thank you. Our next item is the new playground equipment at Lewis Lemon Elementary. Is there a motion and a second to approve this item?
So moved.
Seconded by Mr. Dixon. Any questions or discussion? Ms. McCulloch?
So at the last meeting, we were told that it would just be a replica of what they'd already done at Haskell, and I asked if there could be any input whatsoever by the school, I mean, even if they could vote on color. So I'm just wondering if they went back and had any conversation, or they, and you could share what that was.
Ms. Phillips?
Yes, Anna Lang, Director of Operations, and Cindy Nelson were able to go back to Lewis Lemon and speak with the principal and assistant principal, and they were able to choose colors of the playground, so they chose orange, green and blue for the structure and adjoining pieces. I cannot say whether the principal and assistant principal were able to speak with the students.
Oh, and you knew what my next question was, so was that just some adults deciding or not? We don't know.
Correct.
Well, I don't know. That's not a tough question, eh?
And I apologize, I did not follow up on that piece.
Any other questions or comments? The coordinator then called the roll on the approval of the new playground equipment for Lewis Lemon.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scirvano?
Yes.
Ms. McCulloch?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
The motion passes with six yeses.
Our next item is the purchasing consortia. Is there a motion and a second to approve this item?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Rollins. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, I'll have the coordinator then call the roll on the approval of the purchasing consortia.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scirvano?
Yes.
Ms. McCulloch?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
The motion passes with six yeses.
Okay. Our next item is the Paradigm Consulting Agreement that was presented. Is there a motion and a second to approve this?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Rollins. Questions or discussion? Seeing none, I'll have the coordinator call the roll on the approval of the Paradigm Consulting Agreement.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scirvano?
Yes.
Ms. McCulloch?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
The motion passes with six yeses.
Thank you. Our final item is the 2019-20 revisions to the student code of conduct that Mrs. Hite Carter presented. Is there a motion and a second to approve this item?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Siegel. Is there any questions or discussion? Mr. Connor?
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't. I'll just say again, every year, when I read through this and watch the process, I'm amazed at what a good job is done on this, so I'll just say, this is a ton of work, and I think a lot of the board members have pointed out how well the engagement and the, really, the culture in the schools have gotten better. So I really, this is a lot of work, but really, congrats to Mrs. Hite Carter and her staff for really doing a good work on this.
Okay. Mr. Siegel?
One of the highlighted items in the new student code of conduct is how we are going to address cell phone usage in the classroom, as was mentioned by our speaker at the beginning of the meeting. I have struggled with this particular issue, because I do think that cell phones do represent a serious problem for people who are unable to disengage from their electronic devices. But I also recognize that, looking forward, it's probably going to be really hard to separate the cell phone from the classroom, that it'll probably be integrated into it more and more and more, as it just becomes the most efficient form of finding information, I kind of like how this particular discipline is written, because it does make the parents or the guardians and the families partners with the school district in watching the cell phone usage evolve. We should be able to get plenty of good input as to the direction that adoption of responsible use of these devices will come. At least I hope that is the case. I think the student code of conduct has been a very powerful tool to help improve the climate, as Mr. Connor has mentioned, and in so improving the climate, I am hopeful that that extends to helping with achievement in the classroom, the delivery of our educational content. I think this is also an opportunity for the student code of conduct to grow and evolve, partly through watching how curriculum is presented to our students. So I think that there is a chance for just a really great relationship to exist between the student code of conduct and curriculum in this particular issue. I am hopeful that it goes well. I hope that we can move towards a fairly consistent, uniform delivery of, not a delivery, but adherence to the code of conduct, and then just to be flexible and watch how this particular issue evolves.
Other comments? Ms. McCulloch?
Well, y'all know, I think, doesn't go far enough. So, I, everything I read, and there's something out there every single day about how the overuse of cell phones in the schools affects achievement, affects focus, affects attention, affects social interaction, and just engagement in general. And so, I certainly would love to have seen it so that they were out of the schools all day long, and then you don't have to worry who can have it, who can't have it, because this one, I think, I hope I'm wrong, but I think it sets us up for failure because you've got students who are going to be put on, where they're not able to have a phone in school at all for, be it a week, a month, a semester. And the onus is on the staff to identify and, you know, then let's take it away again and let's have the parent come in again. And I totally agree with you. I think the one positive to me is that we are making the parents come in to pick up the phone. Now, we used to do that when the kids came a long time ago. I mean, it's always been the rule, right, Mr. Dr. Vosberg, that the parent has to come in when a student is suspended to bring the student back into school?
Right.
And for a long time, we didn't have continuity across this district in following through with that piece of, I think it's an administrative regulation, I'm not sure if it was actually in the code, I think it was in the code, but we weren't doing it at all the schools. But if you make it a little painful for a parent, there's more likelihood, I think, that they will attempt to encourage their students to at least follow what's been put forth. And so, if they have a week that they're not supposed to be using it and they get caught and we pull it away again, now it's a month and the parent, of course, had to come back. I understand that the district is fearful. They're afraid to take the devices and lock them up. Each of the schools has a safe because they're concerned that this $1,000 device that the student has in school could somehow go missing or broken or whatever. Students choosing to bring that to school. We're not making them bring it to school. So, again, the onus is not on us, but it will be on the teachers and it will be on the administrators because now they're going to have this list and Johnny and Suzie and whoever shouldn't have one out today and we're supposed to wander the cafeteria or the halls and make sure that they don't have it. And the teacher's supposed to make sure that they don't see one with the student when they come in. I just think it sets up a lot of work as compared to just not having them there. Nonetheless, I do appreciate the effort that was put into putting in the tiered system of consequences, so long as, again, the parents are there. And it'll be interesting to hear the feedback. I mean, part of the reason this is coming forward is we've had so many teachers who have said that they can't control them, first of all. We do have a lot of teachers who say they can, but that it's out of control in the school and, you know, what's happening in one class bleeds over into another class. The idea that we will need them for educational purposes, we have Chromebooks in our classrooms. I understand it takes longer to, you know, get into the Chromebook and do all those things, but there are teachers in the districts using them. And once the students figure out what the routine is, they walk in the door, they get it, they get on it, and they move on. If you're, if you're spending 20 minutes of your time trying to get students focused because they're all on their cell phones and who's charging one here and who's doing this there, and of course, now we can just touch them, and then, of course, we've got the watches and we've got the earbuds with the kids with their pieces here and they're listening to movies and whatever else. I, I just think electronics, other than the ones provided the district, don't have a place in the school right now. And so, if we're about achievement and we really meant it, then we would be focusing on students and all the other pieces, like I said, the social, emotional, the things that are going on with students nowadays, the increase in depression, increase in suicide, all the problems, because we're on social media all the time and we're thinking everybody else is doing things better than we are and we just can't keep up. So, the parent piece is essential. I also think the administrative support is important. You can't put the onus on this totally on the teachers and making sure, while I like the fact that we were told that administrators will do more spot checks and it is part of a teacher's evaluation whether or not they're controlling the use of cell phones in their classrooms, and that will be, I'm thrilled with that. But how are we going to help those teachers once they take them away? I mean, there's a lot of time and we, I've said from the beginning, we have to hit it hard at the beginning of the year. We can't start, I've been told. It's seasonal, you have to start hard. You can, it's like discipline with your children, you can always back off. But unless those teachers get the support of their administration, again, we're setting ourselves up for failure. One of the things we talked about early on in our conversations when I brought this up was, was having some money available to the schools for any support devices that they need. I mean, we talked about yonder pouches, I'm sure there's other pieces out there. That is not part of this and it's not part of the budget. And that was, to me, another way that administration is supporting the teachers, saying, okay, I understand some schools have the yonder pouches and they're not using them effectively. There are other schools who are using them effectively. So, I'm not saying we buy them for every classroom, but what I'm saying, if a classroom wants to have those, that there'll be a budget there for them to purchase and not just out of their building, because the prioritization of what their building budget goes to is determined by, you know, the administration. And so, you know, I would like to see the administration committed to that, that money being available. That said, at least we're trying, and I just don't want to set us up for failure so that I'm sitting here next year saying, okay, what are we going to do to make it work this year? Because it didn't work last year. So, and we do have cards going to all the families, right? Did we pick the color or black and white? It was like $1,500, right? So, nobody's going to be able to say we didn't know. Well, yeah, they still will.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Rollins?
So, I left the committee of the whole meeting early and apparently I missed a pretty good discussion about electronic devices.
Yes, you did.
I will say, I agree with everything that the speaker has said and most of what Mrs. McCulloch has said as well. To me, this is a student achievement issue. Kids aren't learning if they're sitting in a classroom with earbuds, looking at their cell phones, and we ought to care about that. One of the articles I read not that long ago indicated that this has also become, that there's a difference in how schools treat this depending on how affluent the schools are. The more affluent schools are banning cell phones and the less affluent schools are not. And I can, I can sort of see that in this district. My kids go to the two marshals. They ban cell phones at both marshals, it's enforced, and kids don't have cell phones in their classrooms at either of the marshals. And it works. I'm going to draw a parallel here to, again, back when I first got on the board, we had a real problem with kids tardy, lingering in the hallways between classes and coming into classes late. And we cracked down on that. The administration is the one who recommended that, that we cracked down on that because the kids, kids aren't learning in the hallway and, you know, they're causing behavior issues. And we were warned that, you know, if we crack down on it, there's going to be pushback. But we were also told kids are smart and they're going to figure it out, and there'll be, there'll be a little bit of a bell curve where disciplinary referrals go up and then they'll come down. And that all came true. It absolutely all came true. And I think we're going to face the same situation here. We have not been enforcing these rules in the past. We're going to implement these rules. I think it's, it's important that we clearly communicate to parents and children. I do believe the children are smart. They'll figure it out if we uniformly enforce these, if we send the message to the schools that this is important and that we have to, and that we expect them to enforce these rules. So, I hope that we will do that and that we'll take exactly the same approach to this that we took to getting kids into the classrooms and out of the hallway when the bell rang. I just had one quick question on the half page on the electronic devices. There just seems to be a numbering issue on page one, I don't know if this is page two. It says possession and use of cell phones and other electronic devices are subject to the following rules, four, five, six. Electronic study aids may be used during school day if, four, five, six. And somebody might have just had a problem with their automatic numbering. I assume that's just one, two, three, and we're not missing something? Well, it's on that half page. It's called half page, what's it called? Electronic devices violations, half page handout?
Yeah. I see where you're referring to. Yeah, we can. All right, thanks. I just want to make a comment now. Ms. McCulloch, again, thank you for bringing this concern and we are, we are, this board has been all about achievement and we believe that this, the use of cell phones distracts students and contributes to discipline issues, as our speaker mentioned, or whatever. And again, at District Leadership Team on Monday, I want you to know that we had this discussion all over again to see how we're, and I guess my takeaway was that, in my, I was hearing from some teachers from, or some representatives from the REA that, you know, were concerned about that, you know, the teacher piece of this or whatever. But then we had, we had a wonder, we have a wonderful teacher from East High School who has done, has been following the policy and enforcing it and hitting it hard at the beginning of the year, and that teacher does not have a problem. Would you agree, Dr. Vosberg? He does not have a problem in his classroom because of the way he implements the current policy. Would you agree with that?
Yes, I would agree with that.
Okay, all right. So, it, it's all, to me, it's all about the implementation.
Yep. We're going to work real hard this year to be clear with the teachers on how we're going to support them, but also how we expect them to help us enforce the policy, because that's the first line of defense, is the teacher enforcing the rule consistently every day. I've had multiple conversations with assistant principals and principals about this issue and where they, where they have struggles is where they have inconsistent expectations in the classroom.
Okay. Any other comments or discussion? Have the coordinator then call the role on the approval of item H, the student code of conduct revisions for 1920.
Mr. Scovano?
Yes.
Ms. McCulloch?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins? The motion passes with six yeses.
Thank you. We are now on to then new business. Item 15A was pulled by administration, so we're going to jump down to Mrs. French and the intergovernmental agreement with CANCY.
We're here tonight to discuss a renewal of an intergovernmental agreement between Rockford Public Schools and CANCY, which is the Career Education Associates of North Central Illinois. Every public district in the state of Illinois is required to obtain their federal Perkins dollars and their career and technical improvement funds through an EFE or an Education for Employment Agency. CANCY is the EFE for Rockford Public Schools as well as 13 other districts in the region. And as a whole, all of those districts receive about $1.1 million to support career and technical education. Funds support industry-recognized credentials, so all those credentials that our students receive come at a cost, and the federal Perkins dollars and CTEI funds cover those credentials as well as transportation and substitute teachers for work-based learning experiences, some equipment for our courses, CTE courses, and then our academy coaches are the CTE directors for their schools. So, they actually write the grants that are due in May for the following fiscal year. But when I say write the grant, they really are talking about how are they going to spend the allocations that they are given prior to writing the grant. So, this is the funding by school for the current fiscal year and FY '20. Funding is based upon the number of students in a CTE class taught by a CTE-certified teacher. And then, funding is two years in arrears. So, funding for our current fiscal year is based on the number of students that were in career and technical education in the 2017, 18, or 2016, 17 school year. This is, I know, hard to see on the screen, but Rockford is the third down from the top, and that shows the increase in funding over the last six fiscal years. So, I want to give a lot of credit to my predecessors, Nick Bootenhoff and Dave Carson, for really advocating for RPS 205 through CANCY to get our funding to where it is today. You can see that there was a time that we were getting almost the same amount of funding as Harlem and Hananeega, even though we have far more students in CTE courses. So, it was really a matter of advocating and really just taking the time to record what we're doing through CANCY. And then, as, as we've moved forward, as we grow our pathways, that also increases our career and technical education funding through CANCY. So, the alternative is to not renew the intergovernmental agreement. If we do not renew the IGA, we don't get the funds to support our programs. So, the solution is to approve the IGA. There's no expense to RPS. We will assess the situation by tracking number of certifications earned by our students. CANCY does a technical skill attainment, which identifies technical skill assessments connected to workforce demand, and then the number of work-based learning experiences that our students obtain. The return on investment is the financial support for our CTE programs. So, our career and technical education courses largely are our pathway courses, with the exception of studio arts. The CTE courses are based on national career clusters, so those are predetermined by the Department of Education. And then, as a result of these funds, we're able to purchase more industry certifications for our students, send more students on trips through funding of the transportation, and then purchase equipment for students, which may include things such as breaks for our automotive courses, Adobe Final Cut Pro for our media production course, external hard drives, welding equipment, safety glasses, et cetera. We meet monthly with the high school principals to discuss how CANCY funds are being used in the district and their schools. We have annual meetings with CANCY, and then we will report annually to Cabinet and the Board of Education on our progress and what we are using these funds for.
Thank you.
Are there any questions?
Any questions? Mr. Dixon?
Yeah, is there a limit, a number of students that, that we have? Is there a limit of students?
There's not a limit. The limitation comes in the instructor. So, we can have students in what would be considered a CTE class, but if the teacher isn't CTE-certified, we don't get the funding for those students. So, that's something that Marie Dutras, the Director of Career and Technical Education, and I have worked on this year, is ensuring that all of our teachers who are teaching those CTE classes have the proper certification in place.
Is that all the way through high school? Is that, what grade do they start?
Nine through 12, the CTE certification.
So, if they, did it take it for four years to get certified or what is the...
So, a teacher, in order to have a CTE certification, they have to be a licensed educator, but then they have to have 2,000 documented hours in the field that they're teaching. So, if you think about 2,000 hours, that's less than a year if you worked full-time anywhere else. So, we've been working with our teachers to either get them workplace experiences, which we have done in some cases through unpaid summer internships, or working with them to explore their work history to document that, to get them CTE-certified.
What about the students? That's what I'm asking.
Oh, so, a student just has to be in the CTE class for us to get the funding. So, if a student, our funding is based upon the number of students in the class. The certification, the industry certifications that are funded by CANCY depend on the class. So, if a student's in the automotive pathway, they can earn an automotive service excellence certification for completing that course of study, but we have to pay for that certification for the students. CANCY provides us the funding to do that.
So, that, that was my question. So, they would be certified, that would take them, if they want to move on to a college, that certification would transfer over to whatever field that they're going into?
Correct. So, our goal is to ensure all students have either an industry certification and/or early college credit. And all of our certificate, industry certification are nationally recognized. So, the ASE Automotive Service Excellence is a nationally recognized automotive certification that if you were to go directly into the workforce, would be valued by an auto repair shop, for example.
And all high schools have that certification?
Correct.
Good. Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Connor.
So a couple of questions. So what would the annual report back to us look like? Or just, I mean, maybe you haven't mapped it all out, but just...
So I think it would be incorporated in sort of a state-of-the-academies report, which we're working on for potentially this fall, for what we've been doing over the last year. But I think this is a piece of our overall work. I don't know that...
Yeah, right, but...
That this would be a report in and of itself, but this, this really helps fund some of the main components of our work.
How many pathways roughly does this apply to?
It applies to all of our pathways, except the studio art pathway.
It's literally, so there's 48 of them? So 47?
So, I mean, we have relatively the same pathway, the same 12 to 14 pathways in all of our schools. So if you think about it, the...
So the 12 for each high school, you're saying 11 of the 12 have some overlap with CANC on this?
So all of our pathways, except for the studio art pathway, are eligible to receive funds through CANC.
Okay.
And the academy coaches, for example, receive a dollar amount. So let's say East receives $50,000. Then it's the academy coach works with our Director of CTE to say, how am I going to spend this $50,000?
Right.
And there are certain items that are eligible to spend the money on. But then what CANC does is they come through and they audit to make sure that, that the students that are in the courses that we're tying those expenses to are in courses that line up with the national career clusters, so they're a CTE class, and it's taught by a CTE-certified instructor.
So if I were to use the example of medical, so people who are in that medical pathway, there's a CTE for that?
Yes.
Okay. I guess, and maybe this is just my own impression, I always thought CANC was not so much on the academic side.
Yeah, VOTEC more likely.
Right, so, so that's why I'm, you see the surprised look on my face, probably, is, is that's why I'm asking that, because that's one of the things, so I was thinking about as I read this, what would an annual report look like?
Sure.
And one of the first things is, how does it map? And what are the CTEs for each of the...
Right.
Pathways, and that I'd be interested in. If you have a monthly meeting with the principals, will, will there either be metrics or some results that will end up in that annual report back to us?
Probably not this year, to be completely transparent.
Okay.
But next year, yes.
Okay. And what kinds of things will you go over? Plans, or the implementation, or both, with the principals on the monthly?
So I go over implementation with the academy coaches every week.
Okay.
We, the academy coach and the principal of each school and I meet every month. And that's when we talk about CANC funds, model status, you know, the big, the bigger goals.
Right, right.
The principals are really there to help problem solve, or, or, you know, work through any barriers that the academy coach is having. Not necessarily to get into the weeds of managing the day-to-day expenses.
Yeah, sure. And I will, again, express just slight surprise, because when I first got on the board, this is one of the first things I did, and it seemed to be much more at arm's length. So this is really, the relationship with CANC seems to have really developed in the last couple of years, especially.
I can speak to that as well. Yeah, it was, it was a relationship that was not working well for the school district. If you look at, it's hard to see on the chart on slide six, but, you know, we had almost half of the students and were getting about 200,000 of a total of 1.6 million. Now, you take about $400,000 or $500,000 out for overhead and other CANC-wide expenditures, and about 1.1 million are distributed to the schools. We've gone from about 20% of those funds to nearly 50% of those funds. And it's been because of our, we, it's really been because of the redesign of the high schools. And that'll, and that allows a new funding source to invest and continue to strengthen these. So I think that's, if there's a headline to this, it's that, you know, same amount of kids, and we used to get 20% of the regional funding, and it's a combination of federal and state matching funds. We now get about 50%. I mean, I was very close to trying to find a way to get out of CANC, and, and we ultimately were advised, and I think correctly, that we could save our legal fees and just make sure we do a good job of, of making sure our students were properly documented, and that we built the proper pathways. And sure enough, that's been the case.
So have we, so one of the things that we've done is, if I might call it a marketing effort, is try to more closely tie with local organizations so that they would, say, support a pathway and so forth.
Correct.
So when we have those discussions, are we talking about this relationship with CANC and, you know, as a selling point, and maybe getting some suggestions on the development side for the students that would...
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
All of this is in the broader conversation that's taken place in rebuilding our, our pathways and ensuring there's a three-course sequence in place that ensures all students end up with some sort of advantage going into post-secondary, whether that's work or health.
I would definitely suggest that those are the kinds of things for us in that annual report. I think one of the things that we do very well is sometimes we track metrics, but we don't interpret and say where that direction heads. And I think this is one where, I mean, it's good to hear the superintendent say, this has really developed, and I'd like to see us do something like that, because, you know, I don't want to speak for the board, but it seems like all of us collectively have thought of the academies as a good approach. So anything like this, what I would say is that we could use this in our own advocacy. So I think this is one where, just like you have that fact sheet, and I can't remember what moniker you give to it, but similar, this seems to me to be such a great selling point, in that this has developed. And I would really like to see, personally speaking, how the CTE overlaps with each one of these pathways. I think that would be good, because one of the things I can tell you is that when parents look into the school system, having the knowledge that they have something that's practical, that's delivered out of it, is, is really a huge selling point.
Sure.
So I know I'd like that, my, for, for myself and my usage.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Any other comments or questions? This will come to the board for a vote then on June 25th. Thank you, Bridgette. Mr. Bailey, I believe you're up next with uniform rental.
Good evening. As Mr. Scravano said, I'm Wilson Bailey, Director of Facilities. I'm here to, this evening, to talk to you about RBMA uniform rental. And as our, I'm here on behalf of the three separate departments that manage the RBMA staff, myself with Facilities, Steve Christopoe with Distribution, and Mike Sliw with Transportation. What we're doing is striving for a higher level, or the highest level, of technician safety and professional appearance. Currently, our uniform regimen does not abide by the industry best safety practices, nor does it abide by the best practices of customer service or technician professionalism, as not all of our members receive uniforms. The two alternatives that we reviewed were uniform rental and uniform purchase. While the initial investment for uniform purchase is not astronomically high, the long-term cost of replacement as uniforms become unserviceable makes it cost prohibitive. Looking at uniform rental, we reviewed a couple of different companies and identified Centas as the company that can provide us the services that we require. The solution, therefore, is to outfit all of our RBMA members with ocean-compliant uniforms via the rental service provided by Centas. This aligns with both strategic goal number three, optimal climate, as well as strategic goal number five, fiscal and operational stewardship. The total cost is approximately $60,000 a year. While this is a 45% increase over our current annual expenditure, the per-person cost is going to be reduced by approximately 17%. Over the course of the Centas contract, we will evaluate the impact from both a customer service standpoint and a safety standpoint of how uniforms on all RBMA members is, is moving us toward our goal. And the return on investment that we can expect is improved safety, not only for our technicians, but at the school level as well, as all RBMA members will be easily identified by both staff and students. The professional appearance, relationship with customer service is well documented, and we can expect to see, or I would anticipate seeing, a return on investment in that regard as well. Reporting back, any meaningful results will be reported back to the board at our annual facilities update, which we anticipate being at the end of this calendar year. I appreciate you taking the time to let me speak to you. Are there any questions that I can answer?
Any questions for Mr. Bailey? Mr. Dixon?
So we have an increase of 40, of 45%, but we have a, so we, we have, we, we have increased our workers, but is that correct?
So we are, we don't currently provide uniforms to every RBMA member. So going forward, every RBMA member will have a uniform, therefore, the annual expenditure will increase. However, Centas, the pricing that they provided us, the cost per person is less than it normally is.
Okay. Mr. Rollins?
This is probably more a question for Mrs. Holdley, so I'm just thinking about this, just sitting here. So we didn't bid this out. Is this, this is an exception to the bidding requirements?
The pricing is via consortium.
Oh, this is...
...approved tonight.
Okay. Okay.
Okay. Okay. Very good, thank you. This will be, this will come back to the board for a vote at our next board meeting on June 25th. Dr. Wolf is up with our final item, Consolidated District Plan.
Thank you, thank you. So there are 38 pages in the attachment, I think.
Thank you.
We don't intend to go through it all. This is policy wonkism at its best, and so I relish in it, but most people do not. So we'll honor that. So the Illinois State Board of Ed is consolidating federal entitlement grants. We list them out, but they're basically titles 1, 2, 3, 4, two channels of IDEA, which is special ed. Are all combined in that. And in order to consolidate them, they're doing it in two parts. This coming year, the plan in front of you is Phase 1, that is heavily reliant on work that has been done over the years. In FY '21, all of the actual grant dollars will be combined into this application. So you have seen Title 1 annual updates, you have seen improvement plans, 1003A, AKA Illinois Power. Most recently, our special education and bilingual departments have updated their work plans as they have submitted their applications to the Illinois State Board previously. And so now is coming together into the Consolidated District Plan. It's a big initiative that changes little in the short run, but we really have a couple of options. We either change individual components of the plans, or we forego the federal entitlement dollars. We don't recommend that. We recommend approving the Consolidated District Plan, because there are over $26 million in play at this. So you have titles 1, 2, and 4, that the state has moved together in previous years. IDEA and IDEA pre-K, those are the special ed-related, and the federal call-out in pre-K for the mandated services. And then one of my favorite nickname grants, Slip-Laps, became Leap, limited English proficient programming, are all consumed in that. It's not as exciting as Kim Nelson and Fussy Baby, but we work with what we have.
Okay.
So in this, we have, and hopefully your printout shows a little bit better than this slide, but just under $13 million is the FY '20 allocation for Title 1. Coming in second is IDEA, at just under $7.7 million. And then the school improvement funds, while we don't have that FY '20 allocation yet, we know from FY '19 that they totaled $3.2 million. And then you can see the other amounts. How we in this state assess the situation, really three major ways at the state level. There's the Grant Accountability and Transparency Act, the GADA Act, which requires a quarterly report. We do that along 23 different grant programs that looks at the expenditures of that quarter and gives the state an update on the activities done with metrics. We have the Illinois Report Card, which comes out every year on October 31, and the, also, October 31 released ESSA Accountability Report, which gives us the lowest, the under, the commendable, and the exemplary schools. The return on investment is really additional support. It comes in support for students who are classified as low-income by federal and state guidelines, English learners, special education, and well-rounded education is a new part under ESSA. You've seen this slide before, it's from Ms. Yar's presentation, but the student-based dollars, really putting the dollars in the hands of practitioners at the buildings. So the vast majority of Title 1 and the school improvement dollars are at the discretion of each school. And so when you, when we get to reporting out, you'll see the flow-through on that issue. So within the next few months, we'll be initiating a new strategic plan. I forget what we were calling it, Dr. Munson and I, but something really impressive, 2025. We'll take that and the CDP rewrite and make sure that we're aligning these various resources with strategic planning. You'll have the scorecard that will be released this fall, that Dr. Munson has been leading that initiative. We have ISB reports from the static report card to the added glance report, a couple of which you just saw with the charter presentation. And then the school budgets, as ISB is following up on federal mandates for site-based expenditures, and Ms. Yar and her team are putting that together, you'll actually be able to see the flow-through in school budgeting. I think you saw some of that between, here's the Fund 10 allocation, here's Title 1, here's 1003A, our school improvement dollars. And so you'll continue to see that, and we'll be able to refine the questions, because really, as we've said here, a variety of people in the last couple of months, the program doesn't get results, it's the implementation of the program at the school level that gets results. So you will see all of those. So we're presenting to you that 38-page document, asking for your approval, so that we can submit that by the June 26 deadline.
Okay. Any questions? Questions or comments for Dr. Wolf? Mr. Rollins?
I just have a question about what the well-rounded is. That's a new cat, you said that's a new category. What does that mean?
It is. So under ESSA, rather than just tying everything to reading and math, we're able to deal with social-emotional issues, science, social studies, et cetera. And it has provided us some wiggle room under the previous very narrow focus to do some of the Lego and event, more inventive things. And we wouldn't have been able to do that before if we couldn't tie it to the parque reading and math, under the well-rounded portions we can.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Connor?
So, in one sense, if I might say so, there's not much for us to approve, right? I mean, we're really...
It's a statutory requirement, yes.
So, hey, would you guys like to approve what you're gonna have to approve? Hey, oh, yeah, I'd be, I'm all over it.
I had the same question.
We're trying to be nicer, right?
Yeah, 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 yeah. That was too brutally honest, sorry. But I guess, so would I assume that we have things such as it'll take less staff effort because you're really doing all your, you know, evaluations and, you know, your reporting and so forth through a single mechanism? So it'll make it more streamlined for us on the reporting end, is that...
So there is no indication under the GADA that we will be condensing any of those. We'll continue to do the 23 quarterly reports, where it may draw some synergy.
So consolidation would be really a misnumber in this particular case.
It took separate channels in IWAAS and moved it into one, which is a major innovation. But we hold, we hold non-public consultations.
Is that, did you air quote "major innovation"? Sorry, I'm just checking.
No, I was gripping the podium.
Okay. All right, fair enough.
We're on camera, maintaining.
Yeah, fair enough.
Governor Pritzker might be watching.
Oh.
But some of the... But some of the...
JB, hey bud.
Some of the...
I didn't vote for you, by the way.
Assistance might come. Like we, we've combined, we used to do separate, non-public consultation meetings. We've been combining them.
Yeah.
And in fact, we even did a regional one with Winnebago School District and Hananega for high school, non-public Title 1 services. So you gain a little bit. I don't envision any great reduction in staff time.
So this really, I mean, I'm looking at the results and I'm not seeing, for us, a lot.
It's a major policy initiative from the State Board of Ed to combine them into one application.
Ah, so it's really one application, but it doesn't, it doesn't really save us anything in terms of reporting or any of that. Okay, thanks.
So the, so the, so the real answer is it's a statutory requirement for the board to approve this plan. It's beautiful lipstick on some sow. Okay. Mr. Segal.
Mr. Connor?
Yeah.
Mr. Connor? Were you just upset that this wasn't Fussy Baby? Because I know what a big deal that was to you.
I love the name Fussy Baby, and forever, for early childhood.
Yeah.
Fussy Baby is just the best moniker ever.
Any other questions for Dr. Wolf? Thank you, sir. This will come back at our next board meeting on June 25th. Are there any other comments or agenda recommendations for tonight's board meeting? Seeing none, I'll take a motion and a second for us to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor.
Yeah.
Second by Mr. Segal, we are adjourned. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned at 8:32.